Book out a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for September 4, 2018, 4:30 PM. To order first item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
Mr. President, I'd like to pull out number 1D and then I'll offer a motion to approve 1A, 1B, and 1C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See and done? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion carries. Okay, item 1D. Wes?
The reason I wanted to bring this out is just because it has to do with an ADA draft, so our engineer would like to just talk a little bit about this.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city has contracted with Stonework Engineering, a consulting firm, to provide the professional services necessary to develop a federally mandated ADA transition plan. They've moved to add within with the inventory, this has to do with areas within the public right of way, sidewalks, cross crossings at intersections, et cetera. It's not, does not pertain to buildings. They've completed what we consider a draft plan. We've gone through it with them and done some updates. Recognizing that public participation and input is an important component, we wanted to schedule a, an open house meeting from 5:30 to 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 20th, in this, in this meeting room here. So, it's not a public meeting, but it's an open house. We'll have the plan out. We'll be able to answer questions and hopefully gather some input from the public.
So, some good information there with that. I'll offer a motion to approve that.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I have a question. Is there a place to go and review that plan at this time, or that draft?
I will have to check. I don't think we have it posted because it's a draft. We have it available in my office.
So, it would just be available that night?
Excuse me?
It would just be available that night, not prior?
We can make it available prior to that. We could probably add that to the, to the meeting notice. That would be on the website. That's a good idea.
Any more discussion? See and done? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion carries. Item 2A, conduct the public hearing to consider a request for Dan Horner, Performance Auto Start and Security at 1218 North Front Street, New Ulm, Minnesota, for noise variance from the city code 8.08, noise restrictions to allow amplified music during the Midfest, SPL, and DB drag show. Brian?
Well, as requested and notice went out to residents that were within the 1,500-foot circle from the source of the event, and we received a few responses back.
Received three letters and emails and a phone call, all in opposition of the variance.
Are those correspondence within the area of that 500 feet?
Yes, they were. Two, one was a business.
Or 1,500?
1,500, yep. One was a business and two were personal residences.
And, yeah, the business would have been within 500 feet.
Okay.
Which is what the ordinance originally had.
All right.
And you have the, obviously, the communications from Mr. Horner. City Attorney Hipper had provided the communication from his office, as well as the Star Tribune article, which was, you know, kind of an interesting, kind of a historical perspective, explaining what these events are like. And then you have the draft resolution.
This is the public hearing. Anybody like to be heard in the audience? Step up to the mic. Name and address for the record, please.
Name is Dan Horner. Address 418 North Franklin. Just asking, you know, about this variance and such. I guess, my question, the whole reason was to ask for the variance, was we've had three shows down there this year, and not one policeman has ever been down there. The only thing was about this is we got lots of more money tied up in this situation, and people are coming from different states for this event, you know, and, you know, that's kind of why we just wanted to be able to make sure we could get through the afternoon without, you know, problems with neighbors and/or police and, you know, officials like that. I know, since we've moved to this new location, I think the police have been called accountable one time, and it was not due to anything that we did. It ended up being at like 1:30 in the morning, and I'd spoke with, what is the Chief of Police, Myron Wieland, about this, and he said that's the only thing he had on his record since we've been there last November. Since then, I know personally, we've had quite a few vehicles there that are decently allowed in the building and such like that, and we've not had any complaints that I am aware of. I mean, most of the other places where we were at, you know, we were on Broadway for a while. There's houses right behind there, you know, and then we went to what we were told was an industrial zone where there's a residence exactly kitty corner from the driveway at the door opening of the shop, thus giving us multiple complaints. Like I said, I know we're trying to do our best to make sure that the complaints are at a minimum at this point. That's why we moved to where we're at, and I don't really feel it's going to be as big a disturbance as what, you know, maybe people are thinking it to be. You know, I mean, I hear plenty, you know, there's music playing till whatever time at night, and I can hear it from my house. Same type of thing, only this isn't going to be at night. I'm asking to do it during the daytime hours. It'd be done by supper time type deal, and, you know, it's like a half a day type thing.
Anybody have any questions from Mr. Horner?
What about the complaint letters? Do we have them available? Are they?
How many letters were sent out? We have four complaints.
Ended up being almost 200 letters that were sent out.
So, we have four complaints out of 200. Okay.
And are they concerned, what are they, are they, are they long enough that they-
Yeah, maybe we just read them.
Read them into the record?
Just read them into the record and be done with it.
See, this first one starts out, "I would like to express my opposition to the noise variance requested by Performance Auto Start and Security, which is located 75 feet from my business, Southern Minnesota Tooling Incorporated. I have high-dollar precision, precision machining centers that frequently run through the nights and weekends. On numerous occasion, the allowable decibel level even during the day has created vibrations strong enough to cause concern of the accuracy of my machining centers. Noise competition events as, such as this one, Performance Auto is proposing, are often emitting sounds of 180 to 220 decibels. The resulting vibrations at this level will certainly cause issues with the machines and could cause a faulty product, which will result in unusable scrap parts, production delays, and very likely contractual deadlines being missed. The financial impact of such occurrence could be extremely detrimental to my business. Has any attempt been made to verify that Performance Auto has substantial liability insurance to cover such potential losses and/or damage to equipment? I urge you to please reconsider the possibility of granting this variance. I appreciate the opportunity to express my deep concern regarding this matter. If it is helpful, you are welcome to visit my building and view firsthand the precision machining that takes place. Regards, Greg Holm, owner and president."
I only got one objection to that. The loudest vehicle recorded on the planet is like, not even in our country. It's an extreme vehicle. Has bulletproof windows built out of concrete and steel. Outside the vehicle probably would meter like 100 decibels if you're lucky, and it never has hit 200 decibels. There's no one ever broke over 183. That's like, the all-time high, and that's in a vehicle that's sealed up so tight that you would never even know the thing went off. Most of these vehicles are like 150s. Most of these kids drive around on the streets, probably annoy everybody. I get it, you know, but we've had plenty shows at that location since the last few years, and never once has this company ever came over, said, hey, we've screwed up their calibrations, or, you know, that's just seems a bit far-fetched to me. I mean, you're not going to shake through a whole building and rattle everything apart in there. I mean, things would be falling off my walls if it was going to be that intense.
The second, the second letter starts out, "Good afternoon. My husband, Tom, and I planned on attending the 4:30 meeting today to voice our concerns about the request for a permit for amplified music in our neighborhood scheduled to take place this Saturday. We will not be able to attend today's meeting as an appointment has come up. We are in opposition to the granting of this permit as we have experienced other events at this address indicated, and it was a long day to say the least. One could not focus on tasks they were doing as this was a very low-frequency hum that vibrated throughout, throughout our whole house. Unlike the trains that go by during all hours, you could not simply close the doors or windows to get away from it. The whole house vibrates, and we have a solid core filled block foundation. If this is low-frequency sound bothers people, we could imagine what it does to the animals. During one of the events, dogs in the neighborhood could be heard howling and barking every time a new vehicle turned on their amplifier, or whatever it is called. Dogs' hearing is more sensitive than humans. Now, we want to be clear. We have nothing against loud music from a distance. Sometimes it's fun to hear the concerts from the fairgrounds, but this is under, now uncertain terms, is our opinion is music. It is loud vibrating hum, not the beat of music. After talking with someone on the fair board, it was even decided after one year of letting this company have their event at the fairgrounds, they would no longer allow them to have another event because of the very same concerns that Tom and I have. I know they have won an award that they surpass the decibels that the space shuttle emits. That is quite an accomplishment, but do they realize that even people that witnessed the launching of a space shuttle have to be three miles away from the space shuttle launchpad while wearing ear protection? We understand that an event such as this brings revenue to the city of New Ulm. Maybe the city under county work with this business to find a location that's either in the soundproof building or a ball field out of town, or a lake, such as the Lost Dog and Fox area, so it wouldn't affect so many people. Or maybe does the owner know a farmer that would have property to accommodate such an event? We understand this is a difficult situation, but we have been subject to hearing the slow-frequency hums as late as 1:30 AM. After 40 minutes of this, my husband drove down to the business and stood outside to verify this was where it was coming from, and the buildings next to them were all vibrating, and to his credit, his equipment is doing what it's supposed to do, but not at such late hours of the evening or morning. After this continued on for another 20 minutes, my husband notified law enforcement. The police were told that it wasn't them, Performance Auto, that it must have been a car driving by, even though Tom called the police while this was going on, and it was simply, and it wasn't simply a car driving by. This was continuous noise for over an hour, not simply a passing car. The noise from the bridge construction currently going on down on Front Street doesn't come close to the noise that this low-frequency hum produces. We want to thank you for allowing us to be heard. We appreciate this business taking the proper steps to apply for a permit. Hopefully, they, along with the other city, with city officials, can find a more appropriate location suitable for such an event, and we wish them the best." Beth and Tom Raywitzer. And then this last one, it says, "Hi Nicole. I own a house at 1121 North Spring, and am replying regarding Mr. Horner's noise request. I do not approve as a resident living within close proximity to this. Our son, who is four, still takes naps, and last time it kept him up. He also has very sensitive ears, and this wouldn't even allow us to play outside the day this was going on. My fiancee also works overnights at 3:00 AM, and that is his weekend to work, and he would need to be sleeping during the house, during the hours. Horner wants to have this go on. I do not approve and believe that we need to find a place in the country, in the country to host this instead of in town. Thank you for listening. Kelsey Hauser."
Thank you. Any more concerns? Anybody?
Only concern I have is the 1:30 thing. Like, I've been through this with the police, and there's, there was nothing even at our place that could make this noise. I've had issues with this Beth in the past. I know who this is very well. So, that makes perfect sense that the certain people out of four out of 200 and some would make a problem with this. I mean, if you throw 20 people in a room, you think every person's going to have the same opinion. They're not, you know. It's one of them type deals. Four out of 200 doesn't seem... Like it's, you know what I'm saying? I guess I don't even know how to put that.
I guess I got a question for Roger. The comment you made, you've done it several times in the past year or two, and never applied for a noise variance. Is that in violation of a code?
Well, it depends on, we don't have any records of what was, the level of the noise. I think that had the police been investigating it, yeah, it would have been in violation. We don't, aside from the complaint of the resident that was read into the record regarding previous competitions as described by Mr. Horner, he indicates they've never had any problems. Obviously, at least one person thinks that they have. That wasn't relayed to law enforcement, so they never did any investigating or follow-up. So, if, at such time as you close the public hearing, I'd like to remind the council of the requirements of the code to consider the variance.
Okay.
So, if I could speak to you briefly before you consider this?
Anybody like to be heard?
Mr. Council President, members of the council, Dave Borkert, I'm a commander with the New Ulm Police Department, filling in for my boss, Chief Wieland. And we talked a little bit about this. He prepared me for this, and I have the same correspondence that I know he, he sent to Mr. Gromit's. And it just, I'm just verifying that Chief Wieland said that he checked computer-aided dispatch, our CAD records for any initial reports from Performance Auto Start Securities between November 1st, 2017, and August 22nd, 2018. And I believe it's the one that they're referring to. He said there was one complaint that was made on May 9th at 1:23 AM for loud music coming from Performance Auto Start and Security, and it verified that Officer Gromit's and Martin went to the location, and Dan Horner denied that the music was coming from his business, and said it was someone motoring by on North Front Street. My understanding is they were never able to confirm where it came from. So, I just, just reporting that that, that's the only one that was reported, and we're never able to confirm as Police Department that it was coming from the business.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? If not, entertain a motion closed to public hearing?
I'll offer motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We got a motion and a second offered resolution closed, and rave to reading closed the public hearing. Any more discussion? Roger? Go ahead, wait, hold on first. Finance Circle, please, call a row.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Roger?
Okay, just so the council is aware of the issue that we're dealing with. The applicable parts of the city code are in Section 8.08 on noise restrictions, where it states it's hereby declared to be unlawful and a public nuisance. "To make cause or permit any noise which is in violation of the general and specific prohibitions contained in this section, the general prohibition states that no person shall make or cause to be made any distinctly and loudly audible noise that unreasonably annoys, disrupts, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, safety, or welfare of any person, or precludes another person's enjoyment of property, or adversely affects another person's property values." Then it goes on, and there is a specific provision subdivision seven, "No person shall use or operate or permit the use or operation of any radio, receiving set, musical instrument, phonograph, paging system, machine, or other device for the production or reproduction of a sound in a distinct and loudly audible manner as to disturb the peace, quiet, and comfort of any person nearby. Operation of any such set, instrument, phonograph, machine, or other device between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, in such a manner as to be plainly audible at the property line of the structure, or at a distance of 50 feet if the source is located outside of a structure, is prima facie evidence of a violation." So, that does not mean that the code allows the loud noise in the hours from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. It just means this is a prima facie, meaning you've got the proof that it's been violated. There's also a prohibition of noisy parties or gatherings. For the purposes of Mr. Horner's request, subdivision 14 discusses the variance that the council can consider, and the standard there is that the variance may be granted only upon a determination that strict compliance with the requirements of this section would constitute an unreasonable hardship to the applicant or other persons, and that such hardship outweighs the adverse effects of the proposed variance on affected persons and property. And if the council is going to grant a variance, the subdivision states, "The variance shall set forth the location, type, or source, and volume of any noise permitted thereby, and may be granted subject to specific stated conditions." So, that's the standard. You're supposed to balance the hardship to Mr. Horner versus the concerns that other persons might have who could be impacted from the event.
Thank you, Roger. Anybody have any thoughts? I guess after, you know, Roger read off, it doesn't say that you have to have 50% of people against it or whatever, for the effect of one person or whatever.
This is not a vote, right. This is, yep.
You know, we did hear from some that have wrote into us or whatever, but...
So, the complaints that we received, were all of them within the, the normal range of notification, or were any of them outside?
They were outside of the 500 feet that we would normally send a letter to. They were all- They were within the 1,500 feet that we sent letters to.
They all were outside the 500 feet?
The business would have been within the 500 feet.
So, one, one within, and then the rest were without, outside that extended area. Okay. I guess I go back and I think of other variances that we've allowed, and we've had people that have opposed those variances, and we have moved forward with them. My only concern here is that this noise seems to be very, very offensive. I mean, well beyond just a normal party music.
We do grant them, like you said, out for the best western, different places like that, but do not to what extent we're probably going to hear here. So...
Right. This, this carries so much further, and so much more vibration.
This is kind of the event that, you know, as Mr. Horner stated, brings in people from out of state, and, and they spend money in this town and do that kind of thing. However, on the alternative side, we have people in our own community that are not supportive of this, and they, they're very, they think this extremely loud music is offensive, and, not music, noise, or whatever you want to call it. By the time it gets to them where they live at their residence, it keeps them up. They can't sleep. They can't, I'm not going to support this because of that reason. So, I don't know where the rest of you are at, but this is the type of event that needs to be out in the country, as some of the people stated. It does not belong in city limits. And I'm sorry, but that's where it belongs. And, and Mr. Horner wants to try and have it in town? It doesn't belong in town. It's, it's, we've had complaints everywhere where he's tried to have these events, and it's going to continue to happen until he finds an event like the one person stated at a farm site, or at a park, or someplace where people can gather, and they can crank it up as loud as they want to, and nobody's going to care. And I think that's where you have to look, Dan. I really think that's where you need to move this event to.
My question for that is, I go to probably 20, 30 of these events a year. None of them are out in the middle of nowhere at a farm. They're all in the middle of a town. I mean, this, Mankato don't have this issue. The cities don't have this issue. They had this event at the state fairgrounds. I mean, as Mr. Hipper brought up, the fact that I had some Star Tribune thing that apparently he read through, but it's neither here nor there. And the fact of the matter is, you know, the mic goes in the car, it reads these so-called absurd decibels, and it reads it on the windshield with the doors closed. What's that vehicle doing 20 feet away, 30 feet away? Probably nowhere near. I mean, they have classes where they measure 12 inches out the passenger window, and you're already losing 15, 20 decibels from right there to right there. I mean, just because they read a certain number, or we do things to try to make it manipulate that mic right at that windshield at the glass, doesn't mean it's going to meter the same thing 10 feet away or right next to the car, for that matter. The other thing that I would like to have considered is in the past, some of these shows, we did allow demoing in the parking lot, which means people were able to do pointless, aimless playing, and let people sit and listen to music. That has also been discussed, as we would not be allowing demoing to be happening because, you know, as a respect thing for the neighbors, we don't need any more music than what would need to happen in the lanes at the time that they're given. You know, they get a 30-second run. They probably make noise for three, four seconds. It gets shut off and on to the next competitor. I mean, I understand in the past, we've had some issues with things, and things probably were a little bit more hardcore right in the beginning, and people didn't care quite as much because it wasn't as a real problem as it become. But like I said, we're trying to do what we can to address this and make it so it's, you know, tolerable for people. You know, keeping the demoing down would drastically increase what these people would envision of a show. I mean, the one at the fairgrounds was pretty out of control. That was allowed to have demoing, and there was vehicles that are well past probably anything that should be demoed in the city limits. I would agree with that. Heck, I don't even have a stereo in my own vehicle. I just compete. It's, you know, I go in the lanes, I turn my thing on, I get my number, and I go park the thing and talk to people, and, you know, people come from all over. It's nice talking to friends, whatever. But it definitely is a different thing that most people probably aren't used to, but it's definitely stuff that does happen in other communities at a pretty regular basis. I mean, I've been to three shows in the cities. We can't even seem to manage to have a half of a day to do one show in a parking lot in the middle of the daytime. That's, you know, it isn't said that we wouldn't have had it. I just want it to, you know, make people aware, because Beth was one of those people that I did say we would make sure that she's aware if we did have an event like that, you know, that she would be told. And, you know, a few of these people I have spoke to personally in the past. It just seems, you know, ironic that the same couple people are, you know, the targeting. But no, it will not be an aimless, pointless display of stupidity, as some might think. You know, the demoing would be at a cease, where we were not going to be allowing that either way at the show. If they want to go drive wherever they want to go, that's on them. It's their ticket, you know. I'm not looking to cause problems. Looking to just have some fun and have some people come to town, and, you know, and maybe have them spend some cash in the town and move on with their day.
So, what I'm hearing is we could deny the noise variance, and you're going to just run a show without any amplified music or sound or anything? So, we will not get any complaints?
What's that, for, for the show? Yes. No, the only thing where people would be making any noise would be while they would be allowed to be in the lanes competing. Like, no more, you know, 10, 12 cars blasting their stereos at one time as loud as possible. I mean, that's generally what gets these things shut down and what generally causes these problems. I'm sure that's a lot has to do with some of the complaints, because that was in the past allowed. You know, people would just play in the parking lot, and boom, 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 you know, and that would, I can definitely see that getting on people's nerves. And most of these, like I said, are just a quick blast, and then they go out of their lanes and shut their doors, and the next group goes in, and that's kind of how we've been doing shows. And we, like I said, we hadn't had any complaints having a show down there this year already. I mean, one person sounds like they might have had an issue with some noise at some point in the past, but I don't know if that was this year, or if that was previous when we just had let people have a free-for-all in the parking lot, you know. The other neighbors, like the glass company, which I would have been more worried about them having an issue because you got glass that could fall and break, didn't have any issues. And, you know, just don't do it right by the building. You can park here. It's fine. Another guy that we've had an issue with in the past actually came over and said we could park in his building. You know, so it's kind of a give-and-take situation. You're willing to work with people generally, that, you know, you can get something to work, but, you know, some people, you just can't- But, you know, some people, you just can't get a point across to them that, hey, this isn't the lifetime. This is a few hours out of one day, out of the whole summer. It's not the end of the world.
You have stated that you have had shows there this year without getting a variance. Can you speak a little bit more to that?
Well, we just had a couple, like, local shows where we could get points for a couple of our cars, and then we'd have, like, some of the local kids in town, and they'd come, and we just did the show kind of right there inside the building. That helps now that those buildings are down there. They never were down there in the past, because we can actually direct the cars into these buildings, and that kills off quite a bit by having them run in the lanes in the building versus out in the parking lot. You know, that was kind of an issue in the past. The one lady that runs, or was working over at, I think it's like a ballet-type thing, or gymnastics deal across the street, I spoke with her briefly too, and she was kind of happy to know that she was giving kind of a heads-up, hey, this is going to happen, and, you know, that's, you know, I think if people are aware of it, it might make a little difference. But if you kind of try to contain some of the noise a little more, and not be so careless with it, which I, you know, I can admit we were guilty of that in a lot of previous attempts at having shows. But, yeah, we would not be the first event that would not allow demoing. That has been starting to become more and more, because cities are getting sick and tired of people just gathering in parking lots and blasting stereos loud as they can. You know, get there, get your point proven, and park your car, go talk to your buddies, and, you know, maybe go downtown and have a good time at night, you know. That's kind of where I'm at with it this point, you know. Like I said, I know it's been pretty wild at some of them shows, and that was allowed. So, I mean, that would stop a lot of extra noise.
You said you had one over, there was one over in Mankato. Was there any complaints that you heard over there?
Uh, we had, this was last year we did these, but there was three of them over there, was it by, it's like some kind of antique repair car place, kind of out by 22. And there's some house around there, but no, we were able to get through the show without... But the demoing was not allowed there either. They did, before we even got started at the place, there was no demoing allowed. It said right on the thing, hey, if you're going to come here just to make noise aimlessly, don't bother. If you're going to enter in the lanes and try to compete, that's kind of what it was for. Like I say, I mean, more and more people are leaning towards this, hey, we're not going to have demoing in the parking lot, because it causes more problems than good. That's generally when the cops get called, when you got hours of people just boom, 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 you know. Honestly, that would drive me crazy if I had to listen to that for hours and hours myself, too. I said, I'm more of a competitor. I'm not wanting them to drive around listening to music and blast my ears out at night. I appreciate my hearing yet, but we do do kind of some, I guess, different things.
Now, use one of the words you mentioned about driving people crazy. You know, we want to bring people into town. We'd like to have events take place to get people to into New Ulm. It's good for the businesses and everybody else, but along the same, we don't want to drive people that live here crazy either. You know, it just, I don't know. I got mixed feelings on this thing, so...
I do have one question for you. As you were explaining things, I get the not permitting any loud demo music outside, but you were talking about being tested in lanes. That lane is in the building?
Uh, that's what we have been doing now, because we got the, we actually got both buildings down there now, so we were figuring we'd set one lane up inside one building of the shop we're in, and then we have the other shop that Mike Croll is letting us...
So guaranteed, the testing is going to be done in the building?
Indoors.
Indoors.
That's what we're doing.
All right.
So, I mean, I know there's a lot of things that are a little different than what we've done in the past. If we got to close the door, I mean, if that makes or breaks, you know, the noise...
I think we have to keep the noise down. We've got people that are real concerned about it. We need to listen to their concerns, so...
Right. I mean, if the rules would be, keep the door shut per run, you know, that's not a big deal. That's something we could do. It's as simple as pushing a button, shut everybody in, and, you know. I mean, mainly, you know, in the building that we're in now, I know that we've tested, we got a couple vehicles that meter on the dash anywhere from 165 to 168 decibels on the glass. Sometimes it breaks the glass. But that's, you know, strictly built for that one purpose. Those cars have been tested multiple times, and I don't, not yet to have a cop come down there, as long as it's being done in the building. Parking lot, that's a whole different story. I mean, you could hear that stuff literally from where they're building the new bridge when you're driving, you know, if you're allowed to just sit there and blast music forever. So I definitely see the concerns and the problems with it. The thing would be, we would want to try to do this in a respectful manner, rather than maybe how it's been done in the past. You know, that's, and if it isn't acceptable, you know, we'd give it a try, and it don't work out, I guess maybe we'd have to try to find a place somewhere.
So you don't have an issue with door goes in, door goes down, test it, door comes back up, and drives out?
Shouldn't be a big deal. I mean, if they're going to drive in, as soon as they're getting the lanes and mics set up in the cars, I could have a guy operating the door, and, you know, it's an extra two people, pretty much, to have, hey, you're operating doors.
So you're willing to have somebody police it outside? We'll use the word, just to make sure that nobody is testing or anything?
Oh, yeah, that's definitely, that's what we've been doing. I'm not, I'm not a firm believer in people, honestly, I don't believe in people just blasting music in the parking lot for no reason. It drives me nuts. It makes it impossible to run the show. I mean, you're trying to sit here and get mics set up, you're talking to your other judges that are doing the show, and then you're blasted out by Joe Clown next to you that thinks he's got something loud, and it's, nine times out of ten, they're, they're the guys that aim that loud to begin with, put it that way. They just kind of bandwagon-type, you know, jumpers. But there is, like I said, some pretty serious guys that travel pretty far for some of this, and that's kind of what the concern is.
I think, like I said, it's good for the community, and I'm leaning toward going along with it, but every effort has to be put in to keep the noise down, give it a try one year. I mean, if you come back next year, and we got complaints all over, it's...
Right, honor complaints, yeah, you know, yeah. I mean, whatever the discrepancies or issues would be with it, would be, hey, if we got to shut the doors down, we got to do it. I mean, that's, that's what we're getting told, so... And I don't think it'd be a problem having a couple of the guys monitoring the parking lot and making sure. I mean, I do got a couple team members and stuff that would help out and make sure that things are going as planned, not, you know, if somebody decides just to start a ruckus, well, then I'll probably just kick them out, honestly, because I don't want to deal with it.
Mr. President, the variance could be approved for this specific event by itself, not for the entire year as well. So whoever makes that motion could approve it for just that event.
I would, that's where I'm leaning toward, is this, this event. And then if...
See how it goes if there's complaints.
...another show or whatever in the future, come back. But I am making that. Any more discussion?
I don't, you know, I think there's a motion...
No, there isn't, no.
...made, and if anyone is going to do a motion approving the variance, I think you need to identify the location, the date, the hours. The code section says that you're also supposed to set forth the type or source and volume of noise permitted. So I don't know how you come up with a standard on that. I don't think that, in the past, when we've done it for things like the Green Mill, I think it was to allow them to have the concert, their Rocktoberfest. But here, I guess, if you at least want to identify the location, the date, and the hours.
Okay.
And if you also want to have the requirement that the competition has to be indoors, inside of a building with closed doors.
Now, we have all that here. If anybody's interested in making a motion, the date would be September 8, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 1218 North Front Street. Is that correct, Mr. Horner?
That is correct. Well, I, I guess technically, we call it that street. I think they call it Water Street for some reason, if it needs to be perfect, but we've been kind of just using Mike's address so people can find us, because no one can find Water Street.
Water Street would just actually back further.
I think that's our technical address, say, you know.
That's sufficient, Roger?
Well, we'd think you would know his address. I mean, if you're the one who wants the variance, you got to tell the council where it is.
Well, that's what we've been going for, for business purposes, like business cars, everything's going with that, because they never really had any kind of Water Street there. They just put these buildings up, and we went with that. Mike said, just, we'll just keep it all under his address, which is 1218, which would be, you know, the vicinity and parking lot where that would be. I mean, the buildings are right in that same driveway, so there's no road, per se, going through there.
Okay. I'm going to offer a motion to allow a one-event variance at 1218 North Front on September 8th from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. Is that it? Did I get everything?
Sounds good.
Indoors.
Indoors with, yeah, with doors closed.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor, say aye.
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 Pause, no?
No.
Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Good luck, and do your best to keep it down.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Have earplugs.
Item 2B, consider a resolution adopting final assessment role for the 2017 surface reconstruction project. Mr. Kalen?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a eleven-and-a-half-block project constructed by the street department last summer. We just got the final numbers on that. We've sent out assessment notices to ninety-five property owners. The total cost of the project was about $413,000, and assessments just under $156,000 for a percentage of just under 38%. I've attached a typical assessment payback schedule. It's generally somewhat minor special assessments. We assign benefit of $1,485 per residential parcel. We received one written objection. Nicole has the original on that. Otherwise, I have not gotten any other comments or written comments with regard to this. It is a public hearing.
Anybody like to be heard? Close public hearing? Anybody up? Counselors?
Mr. President, perhaps Nicole should read the letter of objection.
Okay.
I object, the proposed assessment for the 2017 surface reconstruction project, 17th North Street from Alley 165 North to Garden Street. The property identification number is 001 dot 001 dot 164 dot 14 dot 140. Front 90 of Lot 14, Block 164, north of center. Signed, Patrick Schumacher.
Thank you.
I'll offer a motion to, or offer a resolution waiving the reading, close the public hearing, and adopt the final assessment role for the 2017 surface reconstruction project payable over a 10-year period, along with 3.7%, 3.75% simple interest charge on the unpaid balance.
Second. We have a motion and a second, offer a resolution waiving the reading. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Oh.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, number one, consider a motion approving with conditions a preliminary plot for, what was that one? Linger? Lina? Linger? Edition located at 1321 to 1319 South Minnesota Street.
Dave Schnobruck, Community Development Director, members of the City Council. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary plot. The applicant is Josh Sabatino, on behalf of Ettinger LLC. The property is located east of South Minnesota Street and south of 13th South Street. The property is currently undeveloped. The plot would divide each lot into two smaller parcels. Five of the lots would be subdivided in a fashion to allow for the construction of twin homes. The corner lot would be constructed, or would be subdivided in the form of a typical corner lot that would accommodate two single-family dwelling units. The report, or the request for council action form identifies conditions to the approval of the preliminary plot.
Thank you, Dave.
I'll move it.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. President, that is with the conditions... With the conditions, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
No more discussion? On favor, say aye.
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 Pause, no? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 3A, number two, consider a resolution approving with one condition, application of Pastor Lani Carpenter on behalf of the New Ulm Beginnings Church requesting, the new Beginnings Church, I added New Ulm, requesting a conditional use permit to locate a church on the property, Zone B2, at 324 20th South Street. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, again, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit. The application was also signed by Janet Lino on behalf of the Lino Family Limited Partnership. They are the owners of the property. Property is located north of 20th South Street and east of South German Street. The site is the current location of a 9,070-square-foot building that previously was occupied by Dollar General. A church is permitted in any zoning district with a conditional use permit. A church is a permitted use in every residential zoning district, in every business zoning district, except the B2. And that's why we're, they have requested the conditional use permit. The city has previously approved one conditional use permit for a church in a B2 zoning district. Like to note that the church must provide one parking space for each six seats within the building. Then there is the one condition, which is to pay the recording fee at the county recorder's office.
Thank you, Dave.
I'll offer the...
Go ahead.
Resolution waiving the reading approving.
Second.
With conditions.
We have a motion and a second, offer a resolution waiving the reading. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, number three, consider a resolution approving with conditions, application from Dennis Bianchi requesting a conditional use permit to allow storage facilities on the property, Zone B2, at 1601 to 1619 South State Street. Dave?
Again, this particular request was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. The applicant's property is located west of South Broadway and south of 16th South Street. The property is vacant, and is the location of buried demolition material from a number of buildings in New Ulm. Other business activities of the same general character as those listed as permitted uses in the B2 zone are allowed with a conditional use permit. A storage facility is listed as a permitted use in the I-1 and our I-2 zoning district. Those are industrial districts. Since 2000, the city has approved ten requests to place storage facilities, you know, in a B2 zoning district. The commission recommended approval with a number of conditions that are listed on the request for council action form.
Thank you, Dave.
Just a comment I want to make on this unique parcel of property. It looks nice and green on the picture, but most people all know it is a dump site. I think Union Hospital is laying in there. And I have spoken with the building official on it, I mean, what he's going to request for it, if some buildings are built on it. And hopefully, Mr. Bianchi's aware, he might request some soil sampling or engineer design, not that, well, the city approved this, I just can't build it, so that, he does understand that. You could run into some really unique building opportunities on that site.
Yes, he could, so...
Oh, yes.
Quickly, offer a resolution.
I mean, I'll offer a resolution waiving the reading, approving it, just so they're aware of that.
With conditions?
With conditions. Draft a condition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer a resolution waiving the reading.
We have a motion and a second off resolution waiving the reading. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 3B, consider a request from Josh Sabatino on behalf of Linger LLC for a variance from the city code to allow twin homes to be constructed on the property, legally described as part of Lot 3 to Lot 12, Block 52, South of Senator Street, Block, let's see, as, I'll go here, to be plotted as Lot 3 to 13, Block 1, Linger Edition. Dave?
Okay. This particular request for variances is associated with the plat of the Ettinger addition. Three different variances are requested. One is for lot width, the second for lot area, and a third for the interior side yard setback between the twin homes. These all are associated with the five twin home lots that are proposed for plating. The variances are not unusual and the staff sees no problem with the granting of them.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls no? Motion carries. Item 3C, consider a recommendation from the city charter commission regarding amendments to the city charter directing publication and setting a public hearing date. Roger taking it?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, the packet includes the report that was signed by Counselor Schultz as the chair of the charter commission with the attached proposed changes to the New Ulm City Charter. Under state law, with that having been presented to the council, it would probably be appropriate for the council to accept the report. But having the report submitted, the statute requires the council to set a public hearing on the proposed changes. When that is set, because the proposal would be to change these by ordinance, I would draft the ordinance, we would get it before you. You should note that the state law requires the vote on passing it to be unanimous. So, you know, Counselor Mack couldn't be here tonight. I don't know, I don't think he can be at the next meeting.
He will be at the next one. He will.
And I don't know if the other counselors know your schedules, because I think it would be really important for everyone to be able to attend. So, otherwise, we, the state law requires that the public hearing be at least two weeks, but not more than a month after the date of publication. So, I sent a condensed version of these, I think, to you, Nicole. Did you get those? Okay. But anyway, we would do that. I don't know if you know how much lead time the paper requires for you to get.
They can usually get in within a few days.
So, the public hearing would have to be two weeks after that. So, if you were to authorize and direct this tonight, we couldn't have it at the next council meeting then. So, it would have to be at the first meeting in October. So, if you wanted to use that as the public hearing date, that should work.
Okay. That work with everybody?
As far as I know, yeah. I'm good.
That would be a public hearing, wouldn't approve of that. Yeah, we would have.
Well, you could have the first reading and then the, you'd have to have the second reading, because it is an ordinance. So, it really would be that second meeting when we need unanimous attendance. But if you wanted, if someone were to move to accept the report and set the public hearing, I think that's the next step that you have to take care of.
I don't know if I should be the one doing that if I was the chair.
Motion to publication and the public notice and the hearing date is, Nicole, do you have that, if you want it in the record? For October 2nd for the proposed amendments to the New Ulm City Charter and scheduled public date for October 2nd.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Just a comment that, you know, it's just a pleasure to chair that committee and the people that served on that committee for the four months or so that we met and stepped up to the plate and met and discussed and city staff and our city attorney did a wonderful job just keeping this committee going and we accomplished our task. And I think you'll see a good product at the end here when you take a look at it. So, thanks again to everybody.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I have one question on the changes in the fire marshal.
Yes.
So, did the fire marshal move over to the fire chief's duties? Is that?
Basically, the, that was one of the few really substantive changes. And because the charter provides for the chief being elected, we've changed it now to a full-time appointed position, we needed to take that out. And based upon the information we had from city staff, it sounds like the way that the office has been operating is that the chief and the people he's been delegating have been taking care of the requirements of the fire marshal's position and also the chief's position. So that, I think, those issues have been covered. The idea would be, instead of having almost two separate positions, that the chief is the full-time employee and if there was going to be a fire marshal, either he would do those duties or he would be appointing someone under him to do it.
So, do we know, at this time, do we have a fire marshal in place or is, okay. So, we still have a fire marshal. It's just that those.
Chief, do you want to, maybe you could address that briefly?
President Schmitz, Counselor Fisher, we still have a fire marshal. I think what this is kind of doing is giving or saying that the chief is the designee and/or who he appoints as taking care of doing any inspections or investigations for fires. I think they had gave or had the fire marshal listed at one time because he was the one that was doing most of the inspections. And because that duty has been given over to me, I think that's kind of where it's gone to. Correct, Roger?
Correct.
But we still do have a fire marshal.
Okay. Because in here, it says that the chief, what we're deleting is the chief, chief of the fire department, subject to the approval of the city council, shall annually appoint the fire marshal. So, they're still doing that. Is that correct? You're still?
That would be, excuse me, the change would delete that. And right now, it puts all the responsibility, the change would put all the responsibility on the chief, just as far as who's going to be enforcing the ordinances. And if he was going to be appointing a fire marshal, he would have the authority to do that. And this would, I guess, take that out of the city council's approval. And I don't know if the council recalls approving the fire marshal appointment this year.
Do we approve all of those positions?
All of those positions. I think they're normally approved, Brian, in November or December.
Correct. The fire chief puts together a slate of who the assistant fire chiefs are, all the way through to the fire marshal, the city council, then gets that slate and approves them.
And we approve those, yeah.
So, I guess if there was strong feeling the council wanted to continue that, then we would need to amend this. And again, we're not, at least tonight, we were not going to be getting into all of the specific changes. We thought we would do that at the public hearing so that we could do it at the same time any public comment could be received.
Well, yeah, something to think about.
Sure. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls no? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 4A, receive downtown Holiday Garland property owner easement update and structural engineering inspection estimate. Brian?
Kara is here tonight to kind of talk about the update on the easement aspects of it. And I've got an update on the costs that we've ascertained for the determination whether or not the structures are adequate enough to carry the load. Amy Kara, if you want to just update the city council on the number of yeses and nos and maybes that you've come across since the last time you made a presentation.
Brian and Kara, excuse me, Mr. President, could I interject? Just to put this in context for the discussions we've had, this came out because of concerns by property owners and city staff about the fact that there is no written agreement that spells out anything about suspending the cables or the garlands. So, Kara and the chamber staff have been in touch with the property owners who currently are involved or who might be involved. And they both, the chambers met with Brian and I to go through terms of a possible easement agreement. And in doing that, I think one of the concerns we had was the whole question of safety. And Brian and city staff, you know, concluded, well, we've never had these inspected and to really, if we're going to start asserting responsibility, especially if the city is going to be responsible to the property owners, we need to know if they're safe. And that doesn't come free. And so, anyway, Kara's got some information, I think, on the property owners, and then Brian was going to report to you about what potential costs could be moving forward with the inspections. So, that's just the background of it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Kara Knopf, representing the Chamber of Commerce. The property owners I've been in contact with, we have fifteen firm yeses, that they'd like to participate. Previously, we had four nos and five maybes. And of those five maybes, two of them were because the building across the street had said no. So, since that time, those two have become definite maybes. And two of the nos are also maybes. So, they've turned from no to maybe. I did, after the last time I presented, I asked Brian some questions that he was able to answer for me pertaining to things that I could not answer for the building owners. And Audra and I met with Brian and with Roger and discussed the progress of the project and also talked about the draft of the easement, which we got to review. And the easement now has, we've gotten the final draft and it's ready to present to the building owners, just waiting till after the discussion this evening. And we also set up a meeting for Thursday, September 13th, to meet with all the building and business owners to discuss the project and, you know, answer any questions that they might have. So, we only have two firm nos, for example, at this time.
Again, that's for the 11 cables?
Yes.
Yes.
And those nos could possibly change depending on discussion this evening.
Sure. So, we've come a long ways from originally, there was very few yeses and then it was only one block and, you know, we're heading to the whole three-block Garland display. But as Roger pointed out, in going through the easement, you know, the decision on who's going to pay for what and are the structures stable enough to even support a cable, because as the years have gone by, some cables have come down and we're down to seven of them right now and we want to go back to 11. So, we want to make sure that the cable doesn't pull any brick off the front of buildings or create any damage to pedestrians and our vehicles below. And in the discussion about the Christmas decorations, it just basically came up, who's going to check? Who's going to check on the buildings? And it seemed pretty logical that if we sat and said the building owners have to verify their building is strong enough, that most of them are going to be nos then, because we're talking about each property owner probably going to have to spend about $4,000. That's not to fix the building, that's just to determine whether or not it's capable of withstanding the wind load and the snow load and the rain load of all that, decorations, you know, blowing on a cable attached to both sides of Minnesota Street. So, out of that meeting, I went back and made conversation with structural engineers, obtained two estimates, and unbelievably, they're identical to the dollar figure. One is an engineering firm out of the sewer and the other one is our normal, typical city engineer who we go to, you know, our Bolton and Mink. And they both provided the same exact quote. And that quote was, it would cost about $5,000 to do a preliminary inspection. And that's just to determine whether the, what the materials of the buildings are made of and get data, you know, like weight, weight of the cable with the Garland and et cetera, et cetera. And from there, they would make a determination that there might be wood frame buildings with brick exterior. And there might be seven or eight of those. And so, they can deal with all of those eight, seven or eight, and say, well, they're all kind of the same, so we'll structurally design what they need to design based on that. And there may be concrete buildings with brick exterior. And there may be, you know, steel buildings with stucco exterior. I mean, so, every building is unique, it's designed different, and they actually need to get in and look and see what it's made of. And then to the point where they can put them in categories and design specific anchors for those particular buildings that might reduce some of the cost. So, if we're looking at 11 cables, that's 22 buildings and not all of the buildings may qualify, so you may have to do a couple of more buildings. So, you could be up to 26. And so, the estimate they had was 5,000 for the initial inspection and roughly $100,000 to do 26 buildings. And so, that's roughly $4,000 a building. Which is, if you just have one building, that don't sound like, you know, a lot of money to make sure that your building can withstand the weight. The problem is, you got to multiply that by 26.
So, what would the total be, Brian?
Well, the total would be 5,000 for the preliminary inspection and roughly $100,000 for the structural inspection, which you'd get, each building would have its own structural report and tell you what the problems are with that building. Maybe it needs to be tuck-pointed, maybe it needs to be ripped, tore down and rebuilt, maybe it needs, you know, the wood inside isn't strong enough or the steel inside isn't strong enough. And so, you would get a report on every building, so that's 26 reports. Now, if they can group them together by category, wood frame with brick or steel with brick or whatever, you might, you know, you might get 20% savings if they don't know yet. And so, even at that, you're talking 5,000 preliminary and 80,000 for the structural inspection reports. And then you'd have to actually design the structure, the anchor for each one of those kinds of buildings. And some buildings might be three feet thick and some might be 18 inches thick, so they're actually unique. And then you'd actually have to build the anchors. And then you have to put the new cables up, which are on $5,000. Forty-eight hundred, but 5,000, close enough at this point. And so, the dollars add up, you know, pretty fast to roughly, you know, $115,000, $120,000 at the most and maybe $100,000, you know, at the least. It's at that point in time I said, that's beyond my authorization to go ahead and say, let's just go do this and make sure it all happens. And talked to Kara and Roger and Audra and we kind of went, you know, we did not send out the invitations for the September 13th meeting. We just did not do that, because why send them out if we've got this big financial bump in the road that we have to address? This may need to be addressed before we take that next step. So, that leads us to tonight. You've got the estimate roughly of what it's going to cost. So, less than 120, but probably more than 80.
If I could follow up, one of the things we, my understanding was that if the engineers provide us with the report, that, Brian, some of the anchors could be deemed to be safe as they are.
Sure.
But there certainly could be situations where they're not and they have to be replaced. And then they could recommend how to do that, but then the question comes up, who's going to pay? to pay for that? So it looks like just to get the information, and we know we'd have to replace the cables, it's going to be something in excess of $100,000. And then there could be more to boot if we have to do something else. And yes, before we brought in 22 property owners, we wanted the council to be aware of this cost, because this is much more substantial, I think, than anyone thought. And if the council just is not interested in spending that kind of money with the possibility of having to spend more for this purpose, then we're not going to be having the garlands probably this year. If you wanted to go forward with it, to get it all done and have garlands this holiday season, we would really need to have to get going on it.
Yeah, this is not a small project from the engineering perspective.
And this, I think, in those quotes assumed, would they be using the city bucket trucks or would they be using their own?
Yeah, that's probably the smallest cost of the whole thing.
Right.
You know, it was just a bucket truck. But they would literally have to go up and do the inspection, and actually go inside the buildings and try and find out, is that a, how the inside structure is? Is it concrete block? Is it wood? Is it steel? And, you know, the bottom line is, as I mentioned to Kara and also Audra and Roger, is that the engineer's license is basically on the line. You know, if he says, "Oh, it's a piece of cake, it's not a problem, and we put it up and it pulls half the building down," we're going to be relying on that engineering report. And so, this isn't something where they just look and say, "Yeah, I took a hammer and tapped a few times and she sounds good," you know? It's not going to be that simple. So, that's, it was kind of shocking, you know? But after I sat down and, you know, kind of thought about it, yeah, you know, $3,500 to $4,000 to determine your one building, it's not that far out. Our problem is, we have 22 to 26 buildings, and that just adds the cost rather rapidly. Now, this all could go away if the, all the property owners said, "Yeah, don't worry about it, we'll pay for our own structural engineer, and city, just you worry about putting the $2,000 worth of garland up and, you know, on a new cable." I don't necessarily believe that's probably the direction that the building owners would go, so that's why it's here before you. Before we go any, do any more, I think we need to get direction from the City Council. How do you want us to proceed?
I guess one comment, we don't have nothing in the budget for it that would make a drastic increase to our budget this year. Alternatives to consider, I'd go number one, don't keep as we have and give it another year. But I don't know if that's the right way to go.
Well, Mr. President, I don't know if the, what the attitude of the property owners is going to be.
Uh huh.
I mean, there's been no written agreement before, each one of them would make their own decision. And I guess, I mean, my understanding is that the city certainly owns the cables, and the city basically owns, you know, what's going up there, the city.
We would be liable.
But you see, well, that kind of remains to be seen. If an anchor pulls out because of a defective building, everyone's going to be pointing the finger at each other. But potentially, there's some, obviously, some things serious could happen. Cable broke and it hit someone. So I think the council would need to decide, is this something we're going to continue, assuming property owners want to do it? And the events are the holidays over the Christmas season, those garlands, foshing, and is there a third used brand? Which would be...
It had been used, yeah, for the decorative clothing that went up for foshing holidays. Was there something, was there something else that we used them? Those are the two main ones. I think there was something, you know, maybe like eight, seven years ago that we did something with it, I just don't remember what it was, but it's, I think, around the time that we were going to, or somebody requested we put a boa around Herman or something, you know, there's, there was a lot of activity about how do we use that.
And then the other part of this, I guess, is if we're not going to have anything further in writing, and assuming there's still some property owners who want to do this, you know, we have nine, how many cables now, Brian?
Seven.
Seven. And if people start opting out, we might have two or three cables where everyone's on board. And if the council wants to continue to do things, those many might be willing to do it, you know, business would go on as usual. But to really move forward and get the whole thing put in place, it's going to cost some pretty serious money.
I guess my thoughts on it is that I really want to hear from the public, you know? It's been such a tradition forever to have those, that decoration, that type of decoration. So I'm interested, once this really gets out there a little bit more, in what dilemmas and the costs that we're facing, you know? Getting some input on that. And I'm wondering if there might be a group that might want to maybe fundraise or contribute to bringing it, making sure we keep it, or, you know? I don't know if we will be able to make a decision tonight on really what direction to go. I certainly would like to see them again this year, and I don't know if we hire somebody to make sure what's there is sound. It sounded like that was what, just looking at the existing, was that? $5,000 just for one building, or?
Well, it was $5,000 to look at all 26 locations to determine the building's structure and what they're made of, so that they can go back and do the calculations. I mean, this also has to do with how low the cable hangs versus how tight the cable is. I'm no engineer, but in spending 35, 40 minutes talking to engineers about all the different things they have to consider here, it's not just necessarily, hey, it made it through the last 40 years, it looks like it'll make it one more year, you know? I don't know that any of them were willing to sit there and say, "I'm going to sign my signature, it'll make it one more year." What they would do is look at the buildings, get an idea of what's going on, and then they would come back and say, 12 buildings are built like this, eight buildings are built like this, two buildings are built like this, these are going to cost a lot of money, these are not going to be as expensive, and I think I can put an estimate together of, maybe it's $75,000 to do it. You know, I don't know what that is, but they were to the dollar figure identical in basically just saying, 22 to 24 buildings, $100,000. I mean, they've done this before, they've done structural analysis of buildings, and the only thing we could hope for is if we had economies of scale where we could drop it down, so instead of 100, maybe it's 80,000. You know, that's all we can really hope for.
May I have permission to make a comment?
Sure you may, Mayor.
I have had many people come up to me and say, "We have to keep the garland, we've got to keep a couple of traditions at least, we're losing a lot. We're losing historic buildings, we're losing other things, now we're going to lose this tradition of New Ulm, the only city with real garland." I don't know. I don't know, those people that are saying that, are they willing to donate money? Like you said, we need more information from the people.
And how would you want to do that? Would you want to do a survey, or you want to do a call-in, the mayor's call-in, call from between 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock every morning?
Whatever, whatever, whatever the council would like to do. Send out a survey to everybody in the community?
I don't think we have time to go do a survey or anything. We want, this coming year, I mean, we have to take action of some type, but whether you do a fundraiser or whatever, unless somebody comes in tomorrow and says, "I'm going to give you $200,000," I think we're sitting here with a dilemma in front of us that we have to make a decision, but...
Do I remember reading in One Spot, Mr. President, that we, no matter what, we need cables?
The cables, some of that stuff is pretty cheap, you know, far as, you know, $5,000, $10,000.
Cables are $5,000.
That's something we need to do anyway, right? So maybe that's one thing we get off the boat.
Well, but the issue is, why put new cables up? And if the anchors aren't, you know, are questionable, so...
You can always sell them if you don't use them, but...
I agree with President Smith. We either have to make a decision, we're going to commit to up to $200,000, or drop it this year. We've got nine weeks and they go up. Can we even get this done in nine weeks?
I'm just thinking, this is not going to be done for this Christmas.
No, I don't believe we can get it done in nine weeks, that they go up before Thanksgiving. I don't think we can.
I have a question for the chamber, what their thoughts are on, you know, what the businesses feel like, or have you gotten any input from the businesses if they don't go up this year, or?
And that hidden pot of money you have aside that you can help us with this?
That you want to contribute.
I'll have Audra answer that one.
There is no pot of money. Audra Shanahan, President, CEO of the Noel Marriott Chamber of Commerce. Businesses love having the garland, it is an attraction, it bring, I can't say that the garland itself brings people to town, but it's a nice accessory or decoration that people enjoy. But I think there's also been a lot of change in downtown, and so, you know, if the garlands have to change, they have to change. You know, as far as getting more public input, I think you are on a timeframe, and, you know, if you do decide you want public input, you need to set yourself a really tight timeline and work a plan quickly to get that and then move quickly. We haven't really discussed the option of not having them for one year to allow more time for this process, so I really can't speak to how the businesses would feel about that.
Well, if you're going to have, if you don't have the garland, you're going to have to come up with something else for downtown on a streetlight poles or something.
We're going to make paper chains. Tom?
Okay, we'll leave it up to the chamber.
Why would you buy an extra step?
I know, I know what you're saying, but you go back to...
Mr. President, could I ask Carter? Audra, I guess one thing we haven't asked is, I mean, the council could, you know, this is something that just happens every year, in the fall, right, the PUC, they get them up. If that just goes on this year, do you have a sense of what the property owners are going to say? Is anyone going to say, "No, you're not putting that on my building without an easement"? I mean, could they go up this year? Is there going to be different responses?
Kara's had more direct contact with property owners, I'll let her answer that one.
If that were to happen, I can only think of two instances. One, I already know that the building next door is willing to have the cable or the anchor moved from the building that doesn't want it to their building, which would be about a two-foot move. And there is another one, I would speak to him, but he did pretty firmly say no.
So there's one building owner who would not agree to have the...
Correct.
All right. But we don't know if the other building owner has a hook.
They both have previously had garlands up.
Oh, okay, so there is some type of connection.
Yes, one is saying no. And then the other one has said no for this year, could be persuaded possibly. But the first one, the building owner next door has agreed to have the hook moved onto their building, if need be. And it would be, it's on this side of the one building, it'd be on this side of their building, so it's a very sharp move.
So maybe you go ahead and have your meeting on the 18th and talk about this and see what their feeling is, and I guess we'll know after that meeting. If they say, "No, I want an easement," or "No go," we don't do it. If they say, "Let's do it again, we've been doing it for 40 years, let's one more year." And then we can work on easement during that time.
Okay.
But I think you're right, Mayor, the citizens are, I mean, that's all I've heard real strongly, that this is what they want, and I think we need to figure out a way to make it happen. Maybe it takes three or four years of budgeting and figuring out a way to make this process happen and not do it all. So what if we have seven strings? We've had seven strings for a few years, or eight, maybe it takes us three or four years to get back up to 11 or 12. But to try and do it all at once may just not be fiscally feasible right now.
This would just be a question for the city attorney. If we were to move an anchor from here two feet over to a new building, would your recommendation be just tell the electric crew to go drill a hole in their building and anchor it in?
Sounds like if you were, you know, convinced that that was going to be safe and it was going to hold up, Mr. City Manager, I think it's the same issue that Brian described engineers have got. I mean, one thing for this council is, and I don't have any idea what the condition of the anchors is, if there was reason for the city council to be concerned about the safety, you can direct they're not going up this year. You know, if you, but as far as moving it, I don't know who pays for it, I don't know who does it, that's, there's a lot of ifs there. So, even if they're willing to do it, you know...
Is the building capable of even doing it?
Right. Where do you put it, and how do you put it on? I mean, this is something that our city employees aren't normally doing, you know, it's not part of their jobs is to hang cables on the tops of buildings, so...
It's probably something that we've been doing. Our guys see a bad anchor and they move it over because we've had some conversations saying, "Well, they moved the anchor over, but they didn't fix the hole."
Correct.
You know, so we've been doing it. The issue, as far as I'm concerned, is we're taking the liability on for that building that we don't know the structure is even capable. And once we take the liability, then the, you know, worst-case scenario, the child going, walking down the sidewalk, you know, going Christmas shopping, and, you know, and the bricks fall off of the building, or hits the car, or hits somebody's grandmother, you know, that's the liability we're talking about. You know, we can get by with some of the, like, the fire that we had at the office supply building by insulating and by making sure that the cabling, the wiring for the Christmas decorations don't rub and there's extra material. You can try those kind of things. The big issue is the facade of the building, the brick, the whole, that part. Some are probably excellent buildings and they're going to be up for another 100 years, but we don't know that. And that's, that's the conundrum we're in, until you have somebody like, you know, structural engineer look at it, we're not going to know.
I have a question for the chamber, because I still don't believe we can get this done in nine weeks. For one year, would they be totally opposed to that option three? If we decide we're not going to put them on cables till we know it's structurally safe, that they decorate downtown different, and until we come up with an extra $200,000?
I'm going to tell you, I've been handing emails from Christmas decoration companies to the chamber, and Audra keeps saying, "Why are you sending me this stuff?"
That was going to be my response.
Yeah, and the deal is, Christmas decorations are very expensive. And, you know, $100,000 might cover the downtown area, that's how expensive they are. If you want the big...
That's a really good answer.
Deluxe.
You know, why would we, why would we try and put a pot of money towards that when we're still looking at this? We'd be paying out twice.
Or the citizens might like it and say, "The heck with the cables and easements and buildings and maintenance," and we just put them there.
Well, if the city council wants to move in that direction.
I'm just looking at alternatives, because I don't believe we can get this done in nine weeks, where everything is signed, sealed, delivered, and structurally safe and engineered. I just don't believe it's enough time.
Like Dave said, I think you need to go back to the businesses and see once if they're willing to go along with the way we have in the past and do it one more year, that gives us another whole year to keep on working on this and come up with something, because their alternative isn't good. Like you said, we don't, we don't have $200,000, you don't have $100,000 or whatever to come up with a whole new plan. And we're really stuck between a rock and a hard place, we need to keep moving and do something.
Okay, so I know that Kara has sent out an invitation to the property owners to keep that meeting for the 13th, so we'll figure out, we'll work with Brian and Roger to figure out that agenda, because I'm assuming that even if we go ahead and do it the way it's been, we'll want some sort of agreement even just to cover the 2018 holiday period.
I would say possibly, yeah. I don't know.
We can talk, we can talk about that afterwards, but...
Discuss and come back to us again.
And Naren found a place to hang their cloth last year, other than over the rope, so... They didn't use the cables last year, they found...
They weren't too happy about it, but...
They weren't too happy. Well, they found a new place for, at least for one year.
I think in a perfect world, before we re-hung everything, we would want to have everything sealed up with easements and all this other good stuff, but I don't, I don't see that happening.
I guess the question, guys, is if you want an agreement in place, that's basically what we've been talking about. And our approach has been, because the property owners, I'm sure, would prefer to put a lot of liability on the city if there's a problem with the cable. And Brian... And Brian reasonably was saying, well, we shouldn't recommend that the city assume that liability until we know if there's a risk, an exposure. But now we're back to the notion of, I mean, you tell me, who's responsible? The cable pulls out or the bricks fall down? I mean, the property owners want something saying it's not their problem. If they've got a bad building and it needs tuck pointing and everything else, I'm not sure why that should be the city's problem. If you want it to be the city's problem, we can have that agreement. But until the council makes a decision, I'm not sure what there is to talk about. I think either this meeting on the 13th, I don't know that I need to be there, or Brian, it's pretty much property owners. Do you want it to go up business as usual? How many of you, how many cables is that? If that's the way it's gonna go, fine.
I think you're right. I think that's, if the business owners want to do it, they'll do it. If not, we're not gonna be able to get it done this year. And then we gotta figure out Plan B, whatever that might be.
Well, even if you'd go with that other option of larger poles, you're not gonna get them up.
We definitely won't get them.
You might get a bunch of Christmas trees downtown and decorate them up pretty nice and I'm sure we'll come up with something, but it'll be cost effective and it won't be garland and they can all blame the mayor or something and leave us alone, right?
I guess.
Let's see what happens on that.
Okay, so to be clear, we're gonna keep the meeting on the 13th with downtown business owners. We would like somebody from the city to be there to help explain kind of where we're at and why we're going to the business owners to ask for their feedback and what they want to do. Okay? Good?
Sounds great.
I think Roger, it might be helpful to have you there, Roger, since you wrote the easement, so you could answer the questions on that.
I don't know what time were you telling them this was going to be? I can contact you about that tomorrow. We're gonna have to take up council time on that tonight. Please get ahold of me.
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything to motion? Can you receive it?
I'll allow for the motion to receive.
We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? See a nun? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item 4B, consider motion authorizing the city manager and to enter a contract with Bolton and Mink to prepare plans and specifications for the Herman Heights Hillside Stabilization Project adjacent to Center Street.
Oh, an easy one.
I wish. Go ahead, Tom.
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department. President Schmitz and counselors, you have before you, for the third time, some options related to the Herman Heights Park retaining walls on Center Street. There are, you know, four options presented to you here, one of which is mostly funded in the 2018 budget. That's the slope we've talked about. Option two is mimicking the south side of Center Street, the Martin Luther College retaining wall system. And then option three and four are a couple of options that we looked at about a decade ago, including a grand staircase option and a grand view option, which are significantly more costly. So our facility maintenance supervisor, Ryan Wire, is here if you have any technical questions about these options. My recommendation continues to be the low maintenance, mow the slope, grass option similar to the Fifth North Hill at the Diocesan Center, Fifth North and Highland.
A couple of comments, I'll get it started here. Thank you for bringing back a couple other options for us. I looked at that Grandmaster Plan back in this room in 2008 or '09, before I was a counselor, and I know that the Grandmaster Plan eventually hopes to have a staircase coming down the front of German and to be similar to the one in Germany so that people can take pictures and shoot up. And this plan certainly, Plan Number Four, would certainly ruin that with having the retaining wall in that area. So I would not like to pursue that option because down the road, we probably would have to remove that, so, and the cost is crazy amount. Option number three puts a staircase halfway up Center Street Hill going up to the side. And I just can't picture people walking up Center Street Hill and then going up a staircase to Herman. And I just, so that one just didn't appeal as well. So it kind of, to me, comes back to one and two, which is what you said, the mowing option or the one that looks over like the college side. Originally, that's what a lot of us were talking about, was making the main large hill in our community with Herman look similar to what the college is so that it's somewhat symmetrical. I stand by that. I think that that's a good look for our community and our city. I know you talk about the mowing option being the cheapest option, but that's a lot of mowing in the next 30, 40, 50 years of maintenance. Certainly, pulling weeds is gonna be a little bit of maintenance as well, but I don't know if it adds up to the same amount. My thought is that we have $200,000 put away for this project for this year. And if we could put some money away in next year, and, because this project won't get started or get completed till next year anyway, that we find some funds to put, to finish this project and do it right, make it look good. I have not had anybody, and I've talked to a lot of people about the two options, what do you think? And nobody said slope it. They're all saying make it look right, make it look good. So I still stand by option number two, even though it is a lot more expensive. I think this is a one-time funding project, but it's gonna be there for a long, long, long time into our future. And I just think that it makes sense to make it look good and look right, so that's where I stand.
I guess, Les, I agree with you. It's where I was coming from all the time, too. I think we need to make both sides look the same. It just makes more sense. And maybe Mr. Kaler will help us out, since he designed the other side, maybe you'd design this side and then we.
Mr. Chair, our consultant actually designed, designed that, but we can work with a consultant on this, that's not a problem. The only thing I would add is walls eventually need to be replaced. I mean, it's gonna be there for 40, 50 years, but eventually it'll have to be replaced.
But I looked at it the other day, I drove up Center Street, and there isn't that much of a wall really on the.
I know, yeah.
I mean, so I don't think it's gonna be a major problem. We shouldn't have the problem we have on our side, because we aren't gonna have the same push. Because it is still terraced and it is all shrubs and stuff.
We can, we can work with the consultant, so that's what I would suggest.
As I, I drive Summit like every day, and the Summit was also landscaped for the same reasons that, that Center Street was, you know, on, on MLC's property. And the Summit side is visually, you can see as you drive by that it's, you know, it's deteriorating, it needs work. So even though we sit and say, it's been there for, I don't know, how long has it been there, Steve? 12, 14 years or something now?
Yeah, it's probably 15.
Yeah, so somewhere in that, in that category. The Summit is much shorter and that is starting to move around and it needs some attention. And that was actually done after, after Center Street, because they didn't, I don't think they did them at the same time. I think they did Center Street and then they, then they did Summit. But it's, it's needing some TLC. And anything you man make, you know, and put there is gonna need some attention at some point in the future, just like the Casota Stone, you know?
Yeah.
That lasted many, many years until the point now where, you know, we've got, you know, blowouts happening every, every spring and, you know, every summer. So it'll, it'll last a while, but it's not without having more work, you know, 20 years down the road.
I think we oughta, you know, go ahead and have some engineer, like Bolton and Mink or somebody work on it, get something designed. But I don't think we're in the position that we need to jump on it right now and make a decision that we're gonna spend $500,000. I think we need to go out and get some design and get some estimates and see what's where we really come in.
Do we have a consensus on that? I don't know where.
I guess I, I really am okay with option one, I think, for the cost. And I think it sets Herman off uniquely. I don't, I'm not a big fan of the other side. I think our budget just, it's just too expensive. I mean, you're doubling it, the cost of that wall. I think green space, green grass is, is nice to look at. I like the open look and the sloping. I guess I wouldn't have any problem with option one. I just think that sometimes we just, I don't know, doubling the cost and we don't have the, we don't have the funds. And we've got streets and we've got, we put a lot of money into parks and they're beautiful and I like them, but we have other things that we also need to keep up.
Councilman and President Schmitz, Ryan Wire, facility maintenance supervisor at the Park and Rec. Operationally, I just want to present some information. Operationally, between option one and two, if those are the, kind of the last two, you know, keep in mind that we are up there currently with lawnmowers already. It wouldn't be a separate trip. They're actually in a very close proximity to the area right now already. They just don't do the terraces. So operationally wise, and then as far as the landscaping, vegetation and mulch and whatever the final details are, they will be needing some maintenance for sure in the spring and fall, doing cut downs and things of that nature. I think it's evident if you watch the MLC side, they do send people through that side quite a bit, what I've noticed. But, so operationally wise, on a daily basis, I would agree that the sloped would be less costly on an operational, over the course of a calendar year, just to use the lawnmowers that we already have up there.
Anybody in the public?
I know Counselor Mack is not here. His discussion with me yesterday was favoring option two, so, for what that's worth. And Mr. David?
It's too late for that, we're already well over budget. I guess I don't have an issue with one or two, whichever way council decides to go. I need, we, we need to do something on that hill. I don't like the option one with the 10-foot-high retaining wall around the restroom, but I guess that has to be.
And based on a comment you made, Dave, once before with this retaining wall along the restroom, they're gonna have any impact on our sewer and water and all that stuff going up in there? Everybody's saying no, but do we really know?
Ah, Mr. President, did, the existing sewer and water service?
Yeah, I thought somebody was saying because of the.
Okay, the water service goes out to Monument Street, so that wouldn't be affected. The sewer goes back to a manhole. We'd have to investigate that a little bit. It might make some sense to upgrade that, but I don't think it would be affected as far as where the wall's gonna be built.
And I guess I just want to point out that the, you know, option one going to grass hillside is, may or may not be the perfect solution either. We had a hillside slough off from the reservoir on Fifth Street. Had a rainy, rainy spring, was it last year or was it early this year? I can't remember. But the PUC is putting a lot of money into rebuilding that hillside to stabilize it. And German Park used to have places for people to sit. Am I correct on that? And now nature has pulled those down and they're not really good for sitting on anymore. Now there's just kind of little bumps in the hillside. So even if you do the grass thing, you still run the risk that you're gonna have a blowout on a really wet spring, you know, where a third of the hillside could come down. So it's not the total answer, because you're still subject to the laws of gravity and rain and, and all the things that, that'll impact it. So it still could have its own issues.
Mr. President? It's really a legal question, but I'm not sure what, where we're at with the study of the Herman monument. And if option one is going to require the excavation of a lot of the soil up there, wouldn't you want to know what we might have to do with the monument before you start cutting the hillside away? I don't know, Steve, if you've got any feedback, even if they would be doing any shoring up or anything drastic with our monument?
I haven't been privy to that particular study just yet, but I've always advocated we've gotta do soil borings up there and see what's going on before we build any wall. So, yeah, there would be concern with excavation around the monument.
I just have a dollar question for our city engineer, maybe he can answer, maybe he can't. I mean, go with Bolton and Mink for $21,000, option one, to design a hill. Am I correct, Tom? Design a hill. And yet, $21,000 if we go with the million and a half project to design an artistic retaining wall? I'm missing something there. I mean, $21,000 if we just go with the basic, simple, tear out the Casota Stone, make me a hill?
Yeah, that was the preliminary estimate. I don't know that they adjusted their engineering estimate for any of their options at this point.
Okay.
So that's basically option one?
Right.
That's basically option one.
I would have to verify that information before making that decision, but like you said, this, this project is not capable, probably.
Mr. Snobrik has an answer, I think. That's what it says right there. Dave Snobrik, Community Development Director. If you look at the cost estimates for each of the options, the engineering costs are provided at the bottom of the form. And so it does vary according to the proposed, you know, project cost.
I don't know if I see that. It's about 10%.
Right there, so just take 10%. It's on, it's on each, there's, there's four different pages and it's on the bottom of each page.
Okay.
Yep, that one. Correct. Yep, just go to the bottom of that sheet right here.
Yeah, you can do one of these options to us. Oh, boy, is this something.
I guess, I do agree with Lisa, too, though, but, you know, we're talking $320,000 difference between that one and two. That's a lot of money.
And preliminary design on option two is what, $48,000?
Yes.
Everybody else is the same.
It's about 10% of the project estimate for each of the four options, so it does vary. Another thing I'd like to point out is if you do want to go with option one, is that these other options are always available in the future. You know, I mean, we're just talking about putting a slope in. And if in the future a council wants to build walls, that's an option in the future, too.
Which I do agree with you on that. You could do option one. And then a year or two down the road, if something does happen with Herman up there and we wanna redo it, our thinking, we can also change it at that time and hopefully don't have another half a million, but I don't know.
Probably, cost probably wouldn't change.
Probably not.
Still be the same.
Same, yeah.
Well, if you did slope it in option one, in essence, you removed a large portion of the retaining wall requirement. So even if you did do a retaining wall, it wouldn't be as big as we probably would have in option two to start with.
Save some, but.
Yes. And one of the major concerns presently is landscape or groundskeeping those terraces. You know, sending our staff up there with pushmowers, because they're not strong enough to handle, I mean, the terraces aren't stable enough to handle riding mowers. So they're up there with weed whips and pushmowers on foot, you know, in potentially precarious and terraced areas. So I hope we don't have to spend another summer up there with our groundskeepers on foot.
Well, I know something needs to be done, so.
And from a sequencing timetable, if you want to go with.
And from a sequencing timetable, if, if you want to go with option one and authorize that, you know, we'll get that designed, we can even bid that out this autumn and see what the bids come in at. We don't know for sure what the weather's going to be this autumn, and if bids come in low, the work could possibly be done before winter sets in. If bids come in too high, we can, uh, rebid it in the winter and, uh, and then do the construction next year.
You could almost say the same about number two, that number two could come in a lot lower than expectations as well. Just saying.
Look on the high side, not low.
It, it's difficult. It's, it's a lot of money, either way, it's a lot of money. But I also look to the fact that it's a one-time expenditure, it's not an annual, um, expense. And the other thought I had originally was that, you know, we do have the renew money, we have a big project going on in that location in a year, maybe two. Do we want to just sit on this project and try and do the whole thing all at once up there? Because it is going to be a mess. And do we just take a year and just work on the whole thing all at once and just tear it all up and do it all over up there at the same time? If we do it, then we can just sit on this, but then we're pushing it, kicking it down the can, kicking the can down, that maybe raises the cost a little bit more, but then again, we're tearing it all up at once, so maybe that's not all bad either, so...
With that, with that retaining wall that you're going to build around the bathroom, as somebody said to me, that's, as you're driving up the hill, you're going to be, uh, not exposing, you're going to be highlighting a wall. You're highlighting the bathroom, you're not highlighting the monument. I, I don't see that, but that's comments and from more than one have said, hey, you're going to be highlighting a bathroom.
I think both plans have that same problem, right? Because the trees are gone on top of the hill with either plan.
Probably.
No, probably, they're gone. Right? They're gone.
But please, trees can be planted, replanted, and, I mean, there's things you can do to mitigate.
You can put a few bushes, I suppose, or something.
Soften the edges and... Just think about it, there used to be a water tower there.
Yes.
And, and if, if, if that was the worst thing that was ever there, that's now gone, and we're talking about a little brown building on Sunday.
Like I said, it was, it was a comment that was made to me, I just couldn't throw it out, because somebody said, why didn't you say something?
Okay, Charlie stepped out for a second. What are your wishes? Let Charlie decide when he comes back in the room, right?
An option might be just a call for a five-minute recess in case anybody else has...
Exactly. We haven't went very far.
Didn't go far, huh?
I used your infamous line, what are your wishes? And I didn't get anywhere.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into the Herman Heights Park Hillside Stabilization Project contract with Bolton and Mink for approximately $21,500 to prepare plans for specifications for option number one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? One more time, do we have a second? I guess nobody's got a second at all, second, it would take a vote, that's where we're really going, so. We've done a lot of talking already here, so. We do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
No.
No.
Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
No.
Councilor Christian?
No.
President Schmitz?
Yes, so, now we've got a tie. So, on a tie, Roger.
It hasn't passed. You have to have, you have to have at least three affirmative votes.
All right.
So, we're probably going to have the same thing on the opposite.
On a tie, on a tie, we can't do like half the hill with...
No.
And one and half the hill with option two.
Yeah. Or we could table it until the next meeting, until we get a...
I was just going to offer that. This is a huge expense, we're missing a counselor. I hate to do this, Tom, but I'm going to offer a motion to table this to the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, table it. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no?
Everybody can blame Larry.
All right. I guess it's tabled to the next meeting. Item 4C, consider a motion awarding the professional services, including design and bidding phases for the Johnson Park Renew Project to ISG in amount of $79,400.
I'm going to offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I looked through this, it looked pretty well done, so. Unless Tom's got more you want to add to it?
No.
It's all done, so...
One more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Does anybody need a break, since I got a, do you want to take a five-minute break? Are we good? We're going to be going quite a while yet.
I'm good.
Thought we'll go, anybody else to run, run? All right. We'll go to item 4D, consider a resolution accepting a grant from Minnesota DNR for a trap range and skeet range improvements in amount of $22,362.
Any comments, Tom?
President Schmitz and counselors, you authorized this grant application and the Minnesota DNR has awarded the, the grant to us, um, and this is a request to authorize the city manager to enter in, into an agreement, accepting the grant and moving forward with the improvements of a high-low, um, combination trap and skeet range addition to the park out there.
Offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorize the city manager sign a not-to-exceed $22,362 grant agreement with the Minnesota DNR for trap and skeet range improvements with an equal amount of local cash or in-kind match.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Offer the resolution, waive the reading?
Um, I just, I think it's, it's a matching grant, it's 50%, has to be, um, matched, and we have an offer from the Suavele Gun Club for, to contribute $15,000, so...
Sounds like a good deal, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's resolution.
Oh, resolution, sorry. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. At this time, we're going to actually jump ahead, because we do have people in the audience that've been sitting here and listening to us for two hours, and they maybe like to go home for supper, so we're going to jump to 5H.
And Mr. President, the city council, or the city had been contacted by, uh, Derek Winchell, Derek and Dolly, and, uh, they own a lot that, uh, adjacent to that, uh, on, on Linden Street, the city owns a parcel of land 15 feet by 159 feet long. Uh, the Winchells would like to, uh, build a, uh, unattached or detached garage on, on that particular location and would need to have this city-owned land, uh, from the city in order to do that. This is an orphaned parcel of land, uh, Second Street North was platted, and then, at a later date, Linden came through in order to make Linden connect to Second. Two lots were cut apart and 15 feet was orphaned on, on the Winchell's part, side of the, uh, the street, and five feet was orphaned on the opposite side of the street. So, uh, in essence, you've got, uh, two 50-foot lots, you've got 100 feet, that leaves an 80-foot right-of-way, which the, the road, you know, fits in there. So, the city got what it needed out of it, uh, which was the road, but it left these two orphaned parcels, which we retain ownership. The Winchells would like to acquire that, they've, uh, put a dollar figure that, uh, they were interested in paying. The county has it at roughly $8,700. Uh, residential land in the area is valued at roughly little over $3, which is in the $7,000, uh, area. Uh, you've got the maps, you've got correspondence from, uh, Mr. Winchell. Uh, I checked down with the PUC and there's, uh, all the utilities are found within the right-of-way, there's nothing in that 15-foot section. If you go to the lot behind this parcel on Linden, you know, those were all platted correctly, there's no additional 15-foot there, it's just, it's just the, uh, lot adjacent, or the adjacent to Winchell and then the lot on the other side of the street that actually has these parcels, so, uh, they've got a proposal before you. It, it does not, uh, impact the, the city at this point in time, there's no utilities found in there. Uh, I don't know, Mr. Kahler's got any, you know, concerns about divesting of that property?
I do not, Mr. President, I think it makes perfect sense, you just have to agree on a price.
I do have a question for Mr. Kahler, or maybe Mr. Hipper. In the event Linden Street would have to be assessed, new curb and gutter, what not, tore up, we would, the city would be paying for that parcel, would we not? This landowner does not abut it.
Uh, Linden was...
No, I mean, they own the 15, we own the 15 feet. The city would actually have to pay?
Uh, you, the state statute allows you to assess benefit even if you're not adjacent to it, so we had assessed benefit four or five years ago to that parcel.
I have a question, as far as maintaining that property, who's been mowing it?
Whoever the property owner is, has been maintaining it for as long as it's been
The adjacent property owner, not, not the city.
Yeah, the city, uh, not been mowing it, that's, and that's also in city code, that if, if you happen to be adjacent to city right-of-way, uh, or property that, uh, is like this, you're still required to mow the grass.
We have the property owner at the, Michael, I don't agree with that.
That's not right-of-way.
If it's not the right-of-way, there's not an obligation. We could have a park there and they don't have to mow our park. Uh, the fact that they've been mowing it was a mistake. I mean, if you, you did it, I mean, if you wouldn't have, I think we would have been obligated to send somebody out there with a lawnmower, but you've also been using it, I assume, as your yard. So, that's kind of a trade-off there.
I guess I got a question. If we were to vacate the street, if my thinking is correct, 50% of the street goes to the one side, 50% of the street goes to the other side. We went, we built the street, let's get rid of the property. Give it to each property owner and done with it.
Well, I think these days, people are paying if your property's vacated.
Wait, are they?
Yeah, I don't, I think that there's usually some consideration involved, they don't just necessarily get the land.
Right, they pay, they pay a rate. Dave, do you know what that rate is on a vacation of right-of-way? This, I mean, this isn't right-of, right-of-way, number one.
No, but it's...
This is actual property.
Right.
Sorry, I didn't hear what the...
Vacating a street, when we divide it both ways, when somebody comes in and says, I want the city to vacate that street, there's a charge, there's a fee that goes with that on a per-square basis.
And it's based on the amount of square footage involved, yeah. It's fairly nominal.
So, the property owner is...
Yeah, in this case, it's not right-of-way.
No.
It's actual city-owned property, not right-of-way.
That's correct.
Just for your information, in the past, the city has sent a crew down there to mow that strip of property, not on this side, but I know on the other side of the street. We had to do that at one time, because that particular property owner knew that that was ours.
Yeah. I still say we need to get rid of it.
Well, the, the property owner has, uh, offered $2,000 to purchase it from the city.
Mm-hmm. And we got five feet on the other side.
That's not before you tonight.
I know. I'd like to set a precedent.
You don't want to buy that side, do you? Okay, just checking, just checking.
I, I personally would recommend, uh, the sale, it's, it's a win-win.
Who else is going to buy it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to offer a motion to set a value of $2,000 for the city-owned parcel and offer it to Derek and Dolly Winchell.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Correct that quick, it's, uh, Kyla, Kyla Winchell. Dolly was my last wife.
Oh, let's fix that.
Well, that would make a difference.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. With that exception, no.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Need a resolution to sell property?
Oh, yes, I think you need a resolution. Secondly, I'm assuming someone has a legal description for this, if we're going to have to draft it.
Yeah, it's attached. The pending illegal, it is attached.
Steve will come up with that.
West 15 feet of that lot. Okay.
Yeah, the tax statement says it's lot 249, lot seven of sub lot two of whatever.
Okay. So, I'll make that a resolution.
We have a motion and a second, offer a resolution. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry you had to sit through two hours. Should've got a little bit of reduction for that.
Okay. I tried. Anyway, item 5A, consider resolution authorizing the closure of the alley adjacent to the B& L Bar Building, 15 North Minnesota Street for the extension of a liquor license into the closed alley area, including the permission to erect a tent in the alley for Oktoberfest celebrations.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Go ahead.
There was, I thought I had gotten an email today that, that they had, uh, asked for music to be played there.
On Saturday.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's time for this to, to get done through, but I don't think there's anybody here asking for that, but I, I had gotten an email earlier today, something about maybe the, the noise variance kind of thing, you know, after 10 o'clock, and it wasn't on their original request, and there's nobody here...
It was a daytime, not a nighttime.
No, this is 2:00 AM, right?
No, I think what, and it was an additional request, because they mentioned to me, and I said, well, you can ask for, try and get it, um, added to our agenda, but it was a daytime band Saturday.
Well, it's not in, it's not before you...
I'm not saying... They, they can still come back with this, there's plenty of time before the 6th of October, right?
No, I think it's...
Oh, it's a public hearing.
Because, yeah, public hearing and...
And it's not for us, so nothing we can do about it.
Yeah, it did not get added to the issue sheet, nobody came in, I just heard about it, that somebody had brought it up, so...
Okay. Finance Director, please call a roll.
I did.
Oh, we're done.
Yep.
All right. Item 5B, consider approving the bids for Nuome Furniture in amount of $65,396.26 with alternative bid added border on the second floor corridor for $129 for replacement of the stair threads and rubber flooring, also the remaining carpet on the first floor and second floor not replaced during the security upgrade of City Hall. Got something on that, Chris?
Yeah, uh, Council President and counselors, uh, before you, um, we have the two bids that were received for replacing the carpet. Nuome Furniture was the lower bid at 65, uh, $65,369, and the other bid was Hiller Commercial Floors that came in at $86,217. We are also, um, requesting to add the, the rubber border, which is $129, um, in addition to the $65,000 for the rubber trimming on, on the second floor. for the rubber trimming on, on the second floor.
The border, the border would be what's in this room here, where you see that. Maintaining that solid color around, which was the original design of the City Hall flooring back in 97.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Like, some of this carpet is 20 years old. I'm going to offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse, no, motion carries. Item 5C, consider accepting bids of Paul Electric for the City Hall light rectifier to LED lamps for the sum of $22,551 with a rebate of $3,623.70 for a total cost of $18,927.30. Go ahead.
Again, on this project, we were, we received three bids. Paul coming, Paul's Electric coming in the lowest at the $22,551 with a $3,623 rebate. Full Service Electric came in at 21, $24,294 with a rebate of $31.90, and CB Electric came in at $77,000, well above the other two. And so, that'll take care of upgrading all the lights in the building to get them to LED standards.
Thank you.
We have that in the budget and we're...
It's part of the building maintenance budget, yeah.
I'm going to move it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse, no, motion carries. Item 5D, consider a resolution to implement Phase 3 and Phase 4 of the Cheryl routes.
Mr. President, the city council received a proposed Cheryl, Cheryl routing in four phases a couple of years ago. Since that time, the city council has authorized implementation of Phase 1 and 2, and now Harden Law and Safe Routes to Schools requesting that we, that you consider implementing Phase 3 and Phase 4, Phase 3 this year and Phase 4 next year. There is a map on there that kind of shows, there's approximately 200 Cheryl's per route. Public Works Superintendent Kurt Curry and I have kind of gone through this, and the Uniform Traffic Control Manual requires that you paint them in a certain location and that they be maintained to a satisfactory condition, and then on top of that, there's a MINDOT technical memorandum that gives guidance on the latex paint markings only lasting one year. So, it's our, it's our contention that Mr. Curry says he'd have to add another paint, paint crew of about $59,000 to paint the next two Cheryl routes. I know Cindy Winters has prepared some phasing plans and would probably want to speak to this as well, but it's getting rather expensive to keep up with all of these, so it's, it's up to the city council if you want to move ahead with this and then what, and what maintenance procedure you want to use. There is, in my judgment, there is some liability that you would be accepting if you went against the Uniform Traffic Control Manual and the technical memorandum.
So, you're trying to say it's a requirement that we have Cheryl's?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying if you're going to implement them, you're going to have to paint them every year and you're going to have to paint them according to Uniform Traffic Control Manual.
The exposure is if we don't maintain them according to the standards. If they're not there, there's nothing to maintain.
So, if we stop maintaining them now, are we in any violation or do we have to seal, quote, the street to get rid of them?
Uh, no, I think they'll probably be worn out by next year, you know.
I have a question. Do we have a map of what we've got done? I know we have the phases, but is there a map? I couldn't quite distinguish which one is...
Counselor Fisher, that first map has the, the four phases on it, right after that email, and we've gotten one and two done, and then also Garden Street.
Right, but we don't have a map just showing what we've got done.
Well, actually, the blue would be one and the...
The blue and the pink, that's what's...
Yeah, the blue and the pink.
Right.
So, with the map that they just put up, I just pulled up Counselor Fisher up there.
Yeah, I get that. I just wanted to see, I wanted all the other crud off so that I could see just what we, just what we've done.
It just gets to be so many maps, we kind of had to pick and choose.
Yeah.
So, we had grant funding, I know, for Phase 1 and 2. Cindy, is there any future grant funding coming or is, are we kind of done in that area? Enlighten us.
Cindy Winters, Harden Newom Project Manager, 1324 North Fifth Street. There is an oppo, I believe there's an opportunity to apply for Safe Routes to School funding to complete the, the Cheryl's. It's an opportunity, they haven't announced the application dates yet. They generally come out the end of September, the 1st of October. There will be funding available, but that doesn't help with the maintenance of the Cheryl's. I did speak with someone from MINDOT today, and it's my understanding that in the MUTC manual, as long as it, that is, it is guidance, and they said that as long as the city is consistent in their application of how they use the Cheryl's and they document why you're not following the guidance within the MUTC guideline, that the city is covered in liability.
Excuse me, Mr. President, who said that?
They're willing to take that liability?
MINDOT said that as long as there is, because it's a guidance document, as long as the city is able to document why they're not following the guidance, they're covered, as long as they consistently...
The plaintiff's attorney for anyone who's got a personal injury claim is going to let it go.
But they've also said that it's a guidance document and guidance doesn't work in every situation, and that's why, as long as the city is consistent in applying their policies and procedures and document why they are not following the guidance, that they would be covered with liability. So, this is part of the Safe Routes to School program. It is part of, it was a recommendation from the Walkable Livable Communities Institute to create a network within the community so that people could use the, the Cheryl's, the, the lower used streets, to use them as, for active transportation to bike to and from work, schools, employment, which is work, church to run errands. You do have a complete streets policy in place to take in, to account all users in your street design and work.
And from a, obviously, from a budgetary fiscal issues, this, this would require roughly $21,000. I'm discounting the brand-new pickup, Mr. Curry. I'm discounting the brand-new $38,000 pickup truck that's in, in the information. You know, maybe that's a pickup truck we just don't divest, you know, when, when they're 17 years old. That becomes the, the paint pickup. But nonetheless, it's $21,000 increase in, in the painting budget, which requires additional crew, because we can only do so much painting, you know, every day. It rains every so often and they can't, you know, go out and do that work. So, it would require an additional cost.
I think we have a priority to try and keep our Phase 1 and Phase 2 up to speed, and, and right now, I'm concerned fiscally that we don't have the funds to keep 3 and 4 started, but we should try and fiscally keep 1 and 2 up and running as much as we can, especially if there's no future grant funding or something that we can look forward to that. So, I, I think at this point, we should try and move forward with keeping Phase 1 and 2. I was surprised, I know when we first started this, I remember the discussion we had that, that the Cheryl's were not going to last more than one year. There's no way with our salt and the snow, there was no way that we're going to last one year. But they do. They do last longer than one year, especially in the less tra, less trafficked roads. They're still just fine. They're not, they're not like brand-new painted, but they're still pretty decent. It's more the busier routes where they're, they're in a little bit rougher shape, but I don't know if we have a budget in place, Kurt, for to keep the 1 and, Phase 1 and 2 painted or where we're at with that topic, because I, to me, that would be more critical than trying to move on with Phase 3 and 4.
We've got about five days left of repainting Phase 1 and 2 this year.
Thank you.
It's been done.
So, you're...
What, what's the cost?
Excuse me?
What, what are we, well, rephrase that. How many are we repainting in Phase 1 and 2? Every one?
Yes, every one.
So then, yeah.
That's 384 Cheryl's.
Yeah. That are existing in Phase 1 and 2. We've got about five days left of painting and every one of them will be repainted this year.
Because we're following what the DOT says we have to.
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm getting it off.
So then, every year, we're repainting every one?
That is correct.
So, bottom line is, is if we don't do 3 and 4, we're still going to sit there and spend the same amount of money every year to do and half of our project.
We're going to pay more.
We're doubling it.
Well, we would end up doubling it, but I meant we still would pay the same as we are now.
My budget and my people can absorb Phase 1 and 2. I cannot absorb 3 and 4 without additional, if Brian buys me another truck, but...
What was that, $38,000?
So I...
Park and Rec might have one for you. They gave me one, they made me give it back to them.
I have a...
That's where we're at. Keeping an eye on our time, and I know people are getting tired, and we have a second meeting yet tonight, but I think we need to table this and, and ask Ms. Winters to continue to look for funding sources and bring her back if we have some.
Okay, Kurt, I have a question yet. I have a question yet. When I was looking through these technical specs, now, they talk about a different paint. The epoxy is supposed to last three to five years. So, what is, why, I'm sure it's probably more expensive. Is that why we're not using it or we don't have the equipment?
Both. We don't have the equipment. We'd have to hire it done, and our, our latex paint is $11 a gallon, and the research I've done on the internet, epoxy goes from $80 to $130 a gallon. So, that's why we haven't explored that option.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, Kurt, the other thing I know I read in here said the second time painting is a lot quicker because of the fact that they've already been painted once, and it's just easier. You don't have to square it up and all that kind of stuff?
That was our hope, and it's a little bit...
A little bit better?
Yeah. It does go faster, but there, there again, we have to have something there to set the stencil on. You know, we can't wait till it's three quarters of the way wore off or we're right back to square one again.
True, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, the point, I guess, I just was, you know, wanted to make known, I think, is that, that Ms. Winters can go back and look for funding, but historically, the funding has been for the first shot and it's not for the second year, the third year, the fourth year. So, you just, you basically just delay it one year. If you could get 50% of the money, it didn't hurt so bad the first year, but the second year, you're still back to these numbers.
So, I have a question. In that technical memo, does it not say that with your streets that have less than so many...
1,500 ADT. Very few of our streets have less than that. It also, the research is based on centerline, and people don't drive on the centerline very often. So, if those Cheryl's are right in the driving lane, they get beat up pretty bad. You know that.
I have full faith in Ms. Winters to find funding.
All right.
So, I'm going to offer that motion.
Table it.
Table it until, and have it come back if more funding is found.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a motion in a second to table it until more funding. Any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse, no.
Is it a resolution?
Well, not a...
Oh, it's table, okay.
Not a diss. Posse, no. Motion carries. Item 5E, consider amending the Newom City Code, Section 7.25, to make it consistent with Section 7.26 and directing the city attorney office to draft the appropriate amended language. Ordnance, sorry about that.
Mr. President, the issue is noted. Came to our attention, the police were contacted by a citizen who was saying, "Well, there seems to be conflicts in the two ordinances, the old one that applied to ATVs and snowmobiles and the new one that applies to ATVs, golf carts, et cetera." And he's correct. The old ordinance basically restricted the speed and also said nothing about being able to operate if the vehicle had headlights between dusk and dawn. The new sta, the new ordinance would allow that. So, our proposal would be assuming that you wanted the most recent ordinance to apply. We would draft a new ordinance that would delete those provisions from the old one so it was clear that the more liberal provisions in the newer ordinance would govern the use of an ATV. So, they wouldn't be going at the, at the lower speed limit, and if they were equipped with factory lights, they could be operated after dark. So, if that's your wish, we, you pass the motion, we'll go ahead and get the ordinance drafted to make those revisions so that they're more consistent.
I'll offer the motion to amend.
Second.
We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? I just got one question from Nicole. If you happen to know how many licenses we've issued this year?
I want to see, we're getting close to 150, well, since last.
Yeah, since we started it. Okay.
Wow.
All right, surprises me, I guess. A lot more than I thought, but, okay. No more discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse, no, motion carries. Item 5F, consider motion authorizing city staff to secure proposals for professional services to provide a stormwater drainage study for the area generally situated between Canadian Pacific Railroad and the city new industrial park property. Go ahead, Dave.
Dave Schnobruck, Community Development Director. In December 2017, the city completed the purchase of 44 acres of property located north of Walmart and west of our current industrial park, and the purpose in making that purchase was to allow an area for expansion of the park. I have been working on the layout of that particular property with the assistance of Assistant City Engineer Joe Stodheim and other staff members, and we've been looking at lot layouts, street locations, and then we kind of broadened our assignment a little bit and looked at collector streets that would be situated to the north and east. And then finally, we looked at utilities. And from a utility standpoint, we're in a good position to serve that property with the exception of stormwater drainage. The agenda packet includes the map that's on the screen currently. At the top of the map, you'll note that's where the Minnesota River is. That's where all the water needs to go. On the bottom of the map, there is a green parcel of property. That's the current location of the Minnesota Army National Guard site, and the red parcel is the industrial park property that we purchased. So, it's easy to locate a pond on the industrial park property. The problem is where does that water go? And so, we need to investigate what our options are for that water. Now, with the National Guard site, we hired a consultant. That consultant came back and gave us six different options to take care of the water from that location, and the council selected an option that took the water actually away from its natural drainage pattern to a storm sewer located at Highway 14 and North Island Avenue. Staff believes that now would be an appropriate time to address this issue with the industrial park property that we purchased. What would we, what we would be looking for from a consultant is to identify the location, size, and drainage outlet for a pond, and then to also look at the larger area from the Canadian Pacific Railroad up to our property and look at stormwater issues and opportunities in that particular area. Obviously, the goal is to find the most cost-effective approach to addressing this matter. We believe having a steady... We believe having a study in place would generate short and long-term benefits for the city. One of the things that having a study in place does, it takes care of that issue for us in the future. Cost of the study is approximately $30,000. I would consider that, you know, a cap. Options before the council at this time is you can do nothing. We don't have to do this, but realize that we're going to have to deal with issue, this issue then sometime in the future. It also has a secondary impact in that if someone would ever be interested in the property, and we don't have the study in place, we'd have to say, well, we'd love to sell you the property, but we have to wait two or three months until we have this study completed on stormwater. So it would be nice to get it done. We have two options for financing the study. One would be to finance it utilizing fund balance. Finance Director Jorgensen has advised me that that's a viable option. The second would be to include it as part of the 2019 budget. You have any questions?
Well, I guess I'll make a comment. I know we need to do it, because we don't want to sit there and say we've got property and we can't get rid of it, somebody comes in, so I guess the big concern I would have is where we take it, and I don't like the idea of using money that we already have. I think we just put it on a tax bill. We need to part the cost of doing business. Reserves were sucking down pretty good already, I think, based on the last budget meeting we had.
Based on the last budget meeting, you decided to use, to tax for a larger amount than, than using fund, yeah, we are using some fund balance next year, but it wasn't, it wasn't the $300,000 where we started.
I don't think we can keep on giving up fund balance.
Is there any leftover consulting fees in 2018 yet that we haven't used that would fund this?
Any that are there are designated to roll over for next year for, for projects that have been identified. So if they haven't been used yet, they've already been identified for use next year.
Have we had any interest in this property yet?
Not to my knowledge.
Just curious. So I think you're right, Mr. President, I think we need to have this property available if people want to move on it. We don't want any barriers, say, I'm moving on, I'm going to go somewhere else.
We made a decision to buy it.
That's the whole reason we spent a million dollars on that land out in that area, get people interested in looking around here, so...
So I think, do you, are you thinking that we add that expense to the budget then and kind of look at that when we review the budget again?
I think so.
Make sure it gets...
Right now, attitude, we can always, suppose change it when we finalize the budget, but...
Right.
Yep. I'm going to offer that motion, let's see, what do we have here?
Just to secure proposal.
Yeah, I'm going to offer the motion, authorize city staff to secure proposal and bring us back costs, you want to do that?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paws no? Motion carries. Item 5G, consider motion to approve the request on the Newham Chamber for the Oktoberfest-related activities. Audra?
Hi, can I use this?
Yes, you may.
Turn it on first.
Sorry, I have that. I'll do my own thing.
I don't think the light's on yet.
I have a blinker.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Okay, well, we'll just wait a minute. Audra Shanahan, President, CEO of the Newham Area Chamber of Commerce. There was a memo from me in your packet with a very rude map, or crude map, I guess, not my, yeah, it was, it was a map with an attitude. Not, not one of my skills, so I have better maps if it ever, oh, look, there it is. If it comes up, so first of all, apologize for kind of the short notice or the, we seem to be so close to Oktoberfest, and so we're bringing this in a little bit late to the city. Our request is to be able to use both sides of Center Street for Oktoberfest. We will be there Saturday, October 6th and the 13th. We are looking to use both sides of Center Street. This came out of a committee meeting that we had a couple weeks ago. We have just had a great response of food trucks and vendors that want to come to Oktoberfest, so we feel that that's a really good sign about our event. And then we are also the, one of the three featured Oktoberfests in Midwest Living Magazine in their September-October edition. So we felt that this was the year that maybe we should attempt to see how this event goes over both sides of Center Street, if the city is willing to allow that. And so on the map, you can just see a little bit, not that map, I'd like the other one if possible.
It's not showing up.
It's not showing up. Okay, the one with the orange blocks, it might be too small. So what we would do is we would make a U around, a U of the food trucks on both sides of Center Street. We still use, the main entrance to our event is right by the front of the Chamber of Center in Minnesota. This gives us more room, more space, to put more food trucks or more food vendors in and maybe not get so crowded by the German plate vendor.
Can you talk about the Kemskis and about the bank?
Sure, I've contacted both of them. Shannon Helashine, President at Bank Midwest, will work with us. They are slated to be open on Saturday, but they have some alley or some traffic configurations that will work. I did talk to Jim Hansen, he left me a message that it will be closed on Saturdays, so we don't have to worry about their businesses being negatively impacted by doing this.
That's the only two businesses we've got to worry about, right?
Pretty much so.
Okay. I, I think we've all been down there, it's, it's a great event, it's getting bigger and better, and, and even the Bees loved it last year, if I remember right. But, so I'm going to offer a motion to approve the, this request from the chamber.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Resolution, please.
Resolution, okay.
My mistake. It's right of way, so...
Okay. We have a motion and a second, off the resolution, any more discussion?
There's one question. Police and fire, have they been contacted? Any issues or...
I have contacted Chief Wieland, and we would certainly be open to any suggestions or advice that they would give to make sure that it's okay.
Contact the fire department also, you're closing it right away.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, question I had, they want to put porta-potties on two to four parking stalls, are those leased parking stalls?
They are in the alley between, I don't, no, they are not leased, they're just the city ones between Center and the alley by B and L.
Personally, I don't know, but they're leased spaces there.
But there are leased spaces there. I don't know which ones are leased and which ones are open, but I think those might be leased spaces.
Yeah.
Whether or not they're actually leased right now, I don't know, but...
Right, because I don't know that you can be doing that.
Now that you have more room, you might have different options, too.
What would you, what more would you like from us about the porta-potty locations?
Can you find someplace else?
Probably make sure that they're not...
You've got bathrooms, don't you?
We don't have enough bathrooms, Roger. I'm serious. We do not have enough bathrooms.
Absolutely do not.
Studies say that bathrooms are important at, at festivals and events.
We'll, we'll look for the unleased parking spots.
Unleased parking spots.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion?
Mr. President, you, you will also have to do some signage in Broadway, left-hand turn lane closed and southbound.
I may get to you after this on that.
You're going to have to do signage so people don't try and turn in the Center Street themselves. Or, or a tour bus. Was it last year? As long as you're aware, there's going to be some additional signage out there.
And this is really just to get cities okay, we still haven't figured out all the details, so this is good. I'm putting down signage and porta-potty locations are in question.
There'll be nobody using the London ads on those parking spots.
Anything else?
Any more discussion? Seeing none? Finance Director, please, call the roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Get this down where I can read it.
On claims.
Okay. Item 6A, consider acceptance of the list of claims paid and approve a list of claims to be paid. Claims paid in the amount of $4,465,799.96, and claims to be paid in the amount of $1,
I'll move it.
Second. We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paws no? Motion carries. Item 7A, consider motion to proceed into a closed session to hold under attorney-client privileges, exceptions to the open meeting law, to Minnesota Statute 13D, er, point 05 subdivision 3B and 13D, er, point 01 subdivision 3, to discuss the terms of the city manager Brian Grumman's separation from employment. So at this time, we don't adjourn, so we'll go into closed session.
We have to go five minutes. I'm going, I gotta go.
Everybody go, run, take five. It didn't take them that long to get set up anyway.
Good one, though, come to this one. Congratulations on your new job.
Does he have to record, he's asking?
Huh?
Do you need to record?
I guess we'll have, I don't know. This is attorney-client, maybe...
Tough to ask, Roger.
Recorded and not aired, but I can double check with Roger.
Recorded but not aired, I believe is correct.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, is she a new journal person? Or the, the K and J? No, no.
She's running for Larry's.
Oh, that's the one? Okay, I didn't, I didn't know it.
Andrea?
Oh, I didn't know her.
Do you have any information on Fonger Street?
I'm going to go get this.
That, that's in the paper a while back. I would like to...